Welcome, everyone, to our November 25 meeting for City Council. If we could have a roll call to establish form, please.
Here.
Bob Cobham.
Here.
Harry Meyer.
Here.
Thank you, Schneider.
Here.
I'm here.
Here.
Before we do this, I want to make sure everybody turn their phones off because the phones will interfere with electronic devices and with the recording, so please make sure those are set in. We stand for our flag of allegiance.
Flag of allegiance to the flag of our states, America. To the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if I could get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, got any additions, corrections, or anything? Hearing none, all those in favor of the agenda as submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Get a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the minutes for October 14th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That was November, wasn't it?
No, October 28th.
October 14th. That's what went on the agenda.
In a moment, though.
Okay, it should be for October-
Well, that's my error, it should be 28th.
I'm sorry, okay, it's October 28th that we're approving the minutes for, so.
Thank you.
Anyway, can we already take a vote on that? Now I've gotten confused.
It really is the 28th, and yes, I'm ready.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have a vote on the Planning Commission for Jody Breedlove for Position 6.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor of Jody Breedlove for Planning Commission, Position 6, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Yeah.
Come by the office and we'll get you sworn in.
Okay.
So, we've got two physicians on HDC for renewal, we've got Dee Bright for Position 4.
Motion to approve-
Actually, Position 2.
Can we go ahead and put her back on?
Yep.
And make a motion that we approve Dee, whatever we know.
Okay, any comments, questions? All those in favor of Dee Bright for Position 2 on HDC, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we also have Position 4 to renew Marty Kogan.
I'll make a motion to approve Marty Kogan for Position 4.
Get a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that brings us to our public comments, please hold your comments, please, to three minutes.
Good evening, I'd like to speak on the Entertainment District. Some of the information I've gathered over listening to the committee the past few months-
Could you state your name and-
Oh, Laura Jo Smolli, I live on Pivot Rock, here in Eureka Springs. A few of the things mentioned by the committee over the past few months, one is that the art galleries push for public drinking, planning art walks where patrons can drink wine as they roam from gallery to gallery. It's a beautiful picture, and the galleries have always had the ability to serve wine and beer for decades, but an ED would not allow someone to take the wine or beverage that they were served in the galleries with them as they left the galleries. Rather, it would have to be eat your dinner, take a beverage with you, go to a gallery, then go to another establishment, have something else to drink, take something with you, go find another gallery. It's not as smooth and beautiful as that picture initially appears. Another thing that I've heard committee members say is that the entertainment is more about, is about more than drinking, it's about coming and relaxing while enjoying the beautiful architecture and outdoor settings in Eureka Springs. My question is, how does drinking help achieve these goals? Is our city more beautiful after a bottle of wine? Does our music sound better after beer?
It isn't.
And, and, those are, again, beautiful pictures, but what studies, what, what concrete things have been used to make, to make these determinations? And what studies were cited that support the proposition that an Entertainment District produces happy residents in any given city? Also, there's a comment about NBC News that reported that Americans do buy about $500 more a year when they're tipsy. About half of American adults who drink alcohol also report that they shop much more under the influence. But let's do some simple math, if one person spends $500 more a year, that's only $10 a weekend, and that only generates a dollar in extra tax revenue. So, how many people do we really need to get to come to downtown and have a few drinks to be tipsy enough to spend the money here? And how do we go about attracting them? So, I don't want to bore everyone with the math, and I can't do it in three minutes, but I'd be glad to share it. It really takes about 500 extra people drinking a weekend just to bring in that minimal amount of money. So, some businesses will do better than others, some are going to see greater revenue rises than others, but if we're looking at a citywide effect, you do have to apply averages and statistical analysis to this. So let's look at that dollar extra per person that we're going to get in tax revenue. How many people is that going to take in a weekend to cover the costs of safety, sanitation, signage, and advertising? Has there been a budget proposed yet for the 200, or 2020 Entertainment District? How much revenue can be expected to be received, and how much we can afford to spend based on that?
My wife and I own Red's Pizzeria at 173 South Main Street here in Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and I just want to resubmit my, our support. My wife and I both want to talk about our support for this. The idea of a seven day a week, three days a week, how that will ultimately pan out, we're not 100% sure, but we support either way. One, because our, our largest group of people who would be participating in this would be the weekend folks. I can say, from our business standpoint, we currently field the question, can I leave with my beer from our pizzeria on a very, every weekend, especially during the, you know, right now our weekends are slow, but every weekend during the year, we field that question. And we see the police officers, they, they're parked right across our street, so we know they're, they're watching our streets, we support our police departments, the patrons of the Bella Paradise love to walk across the street and would love to be able to walk back across the street with a beer and their pizza. So, we just want to, you know, give our support that we feel that this is a good thing for our community, we, we understand that there's, that there's questions and, and concerns from some of those, but as business owners, we feel strongly that this will attract a few more people. You know, I don't know if it's the 500 a weekend that we need to, to do the math, but I do, I do, I am confident that this will be a boost for us, especially over the long term. That's what I have. Thank you.
Hello, I am Autumn Slane, I have Grotto downtown Eureka Springs. I am part of the Entertainment District Board as well. This was compiled of my peers, I would say, and I feel like everybody on this committee took everybody's perspective into account. We thought about residents, we thought about non-ABC license holders, we thought about ABC license holders, we talked about every detail of everything. I just wanted to say that because I want you guys to know what we went through in every meeting that we've talked about this. And we, you know, we've presented what we believe to be good for the city. I, I just say, please, take, take what we've suggested, take what Butch has revised, think about the vision, the big picture. Where are we going in Eureka? What are we doing? What does, you know, 2025 look like for us? You know, what's the next 20 years? I think this is in the right direction. You know, people my age, they're, they're all about the open-air events, they're going to concerts, they're wanting to, you know, take their drink after they, they eat dinner. And they're not those people that you're thinking that, you know, was back in the day at the Blues Fest, you know? We don't have that anymore. So I plead with you to, let us have this, because when people come here, they want to at least have the freedom to do these few little things that they can do while they're on vacation. Thank you.
I'm Kendra Hughes, my wife Kim Yonkey and I have three businesses downtown currently and are opening two more by February. We have one up on the highway as well, but for the purposes of this ordinance, we have five downtown. Only thing I want to say is we're, we're in support of Butch's, of the mayor's revised ordinance, you know, if there's a sunset clause or whatever, we're fine with that, too, we just want to get something started. I will say also, the only other thing I wanted to say is that we have, I was the representative for Heart of Eureka, the Downtown Merchants Group, the New Downtown Merchants Group on the Entertainment District Committee, I was not appointed by the mayor, I was actually voted for by the Heart of Eureka. The survey that was passed out by Alderman Meyer is very different than the discussion that we've seen, or the results that we've seen in, in our private discussion group with that, with the Downtown Merchant Group. And it's also important to note that a lot of people didn't receive the survey. So I think that this shows that there were 100 passed out, I had countless people say to me, they didn't get one, so I made copies of mine for them and gave them to them and then asked them to send them in. Those may not be in yet. There was perhaps a little bit of canvas bias, Alderman Harry, or Alderman Meyer did tell people as he handed it out, including me, that he was not in favor of the ordinance. And I will only say one more thing about it, is having worked with numbers, I've been in business now since I was 19, very rarely do you get straight down the line 60-40, 60-40, 80-20. Most of the time, that's not going to be an entirely accurate result. Usually there's going to, maybe you will have a 37-60 with some unknown, you might have a 62, you know, 38, but very rarely are you going to have those exact numbers straight down. So I have no problem with a survey, or with a public, a public meeting or a town hall, but I would just say, it should be something that's done in a more scientific manner and a more correct manner, make sure everyone downtown has the opportunity to participate. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Damon Hincky with the Chamber of Commerce here in Eureka Springs. I wasn't going to sign up tonight, but they encouraged me to, because obviously there's a lot of chit-chat about the Entertainment District. And they basically have made most of the points that I wanted to make, but I think the sunset that was proposed by Butch is probably the, the thing that I would focus on. Nothing ventured, nothing gained, we really need to try and see how this pans out before we say, oh, it's going to be this way or that way downtown. I think a lot of people have a projection in their mind how it is going to function and whether or not we're going to end up with a, a lot of drunks in the streets that require extra police protection. Certainly, I think everyone is concerned of that, it came up in the committee. We talked with Brian Young many times about what does this really mean from a police force and infrastructure aspect with emergency services? Can we afford it as a city? And one of the things I want to point out was the, the committee was never really given the opportunity to say no to the Entertainment District. It was all from the get-go, what does it take for us to have an Entertainment District in Eureka Springs? So I don't know that everybody there was necessarily, we never gave it the opportunity to say, maybe this wouldn't work in Eureka, it was, how are we going to make this work in Eureka? So I would say, we need to get some facts, have an actual test period that sunsets, and then if we say, man, that was a bad idea to put the wristbands in there, or whatever it is, we just make the adjustment and move forward, and if everybody says, well, let's not do it anymore, we cannot do it then. But certainly, it's time to give it an opportunity to, to see what it can do for us as a destination, because the number one problem with Eureka Springs is the lack of visitation. Another 500,000 visitors will solve problems from city water to anything else, because we'll have enough money going around here to get things done. So if that promotes us as a destination and causes just a few more travelers to come to town, I think it's worthwhile, especially when we have an emergency brake to hit if something's going wrong for us. Thank you.
Hi. It's Tri. Hi, it's Hi. Okay, maybe I've got it. I'm Karen Lindlad, I've lived here 44 years, I have had a business here for 44 years, and I say, try the temporaries first and then try the permanent. We do not have the police department to be sure that people stay within this permanent district, and I have talked, I haven't done a survey, but I have talked to a lot of longtime Euricans who say, uh-uh, there's nothing that's going to keep these people from going to their cars, filling up their cups with more alcohol, there's nothing that's going to keep them within this district, they can walk up any old street unless we do a sky-high police budget, which we really need money for infrastructure in this town. We have more and more young couples with children coming to this town, you know, the retail businesses, I really doubt are going to stay open until 10 o'clock at night. Couple of years ago, when they instigated the Santa Pub Crawl, I came out of my business late in the evening, it was freezing out, I saw some Santa Clauses stumble up the street, and when I went to go get in my car, I noticed there was a Santa Claus laying in the ditch on the other side of Owen Street, and it wasn't funny, because it was so cold and he was so drunk that he probably would have frozen to death. And I had a huge argument with him and made him get out of the ditch. And we know that one of the big problems in this country is alcoholism, and we don't need people drinking on the streets. There's going to be no way to regulate them, at least when they're in a bar, if they get too drunk, the bartender stops serving them, the owner stops serving them, if they don't, then they are legally responsible. But who's going to be responsible when these people get really drunk and they go off and do stuff? Are they going to be able to sue the city? There's no way to contain this district at all, and you've got the opportunity to try this out with temporary Entertainment Districts and see how it works, because they're smaller, you can confine them better. But when I saw the map of this thing, it's absolutely ridiculous. It is ludicrous to allow people to go up and down this huge area that we cannot control, you know? And it's going to cause problems, because people over time here already with the bars have had people coming into their houses drunk, walking up streets drunk, we've already got a problem. So why are we trying to make a big district where people can get really smashed? You know, I, I haven't talked to one person so far that has lived here for quite a while, or a citizen, or even a businessperson that's in favor of this thing. And we can't have a million people coming into our business with drinks in their hand, we have no place to put their drinks. Thank you.
All right, that concludes our public hearing for this evening. Takes us on to our unfinished business with ordinance for animal change, animal law changes.
Which, don't we have an update from Lacy?
Yeah, you missed your update from CAPC.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did. And she's right here, CAPC update. I'm sorry, come on, up there. I jumped right over you last time, so.
You're mad, you're going to bring food.
You're right. I'm glad you all pointed that out for me. I apologize again, thank you very much.
That's okay. Just one time.
Okay.
I'm Lacy, I am your Tourism Director with the CAPC. I live here in town, right next to the Penn Castle, which is a whole nother ballgame of people walking the streets. So, yeah, they do come in your house. Update, 2019, we spent a total of $680,000 on media buys, we had $30,000 in group sales marketing, which is an entirely different thing, and we also had $30,000 worth of marketing support that went to individual organizations for their own marketing, their own events, that type of thing. So in 2019, we had a fairly decent budget, obviously I walked into it mid-year, so there wasn't a lot I could do about it, so we just kind of went with it. We boosted a huge amount for Christmas, we actually, I had anticipated 173,000, we're actually over that, for what we are seeing of what has been billed and what hasn't been billed right now, we are at 125, and we still have half of November and half of December. So we will definitely break the 173 for the Christmas marketing. As I'm sure you know, we have just hired a new advertising agency, which we are excited about, they are very aggressive, very creative people, they actually just signed with Little Rock, they have many other, much bigger DMOs than what we are, which is, which is awesome, because they're willing to take us on, I've worked with them before, they're out of Florida. They were just here for four and a half days, it was really intense, with an immersion process, we went through a huge amount of, of research, they are partners with TripAdvisor and Expedia and Google, so their research capacity is phenomenal. They brought forth facts and figures that we really had not anticipated. I think in years past, the media buys were not being done on a research basis, so they bring that to the forefront. We are going to be doing a new branding, our website will be redone, we are looking at completely different types of media buys, they will be very, very specific and not just throwing money at a TV station, that's not what we're going to be doing anymore. So the process of this is going to be very intense and lengthy, to be real honest. Mrs. Harmon had the opportunity to sit down one afternoon with this ad agency and kind of go through the process with us, it was a little intense. So, we're excited about it, we have not placed any media buys yet for January, which is really no big deal, but the fact is, is we want to make sure that those buys are being done correctly and in the right places and not just throwing money out the door, this is going to be very precise and very specific in how we are doing this. So it will be a good thing. Do you have any questions? Yes, ma'am?
I was at the CAPC meeting last week, whenever, I was really, really impressed and thrilled and happy to hear that in the short time you've been here, you managed to get everything completed that they had put before you. Congratulations, Lacy.
Thank you, it was, it was an interesting list to deal with.
Yeah, yeah, since we're like nobody else you've ever dealt with, I think you did good.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, sir?
Does the CAPC have the ability to poll prospective tourists? Do you have a list? Is there a database of people who-
No, there is not, we are, we are-
Strictly advertised?
We, well, no, we are gaining that database, we know who it is that is interested, we know who it is that is seriously interested to the point that they are booking, and we know once they get here. We are actually setting up, I call them creepers, that's not the, the technical term, but we will have geofencing around the city that will track everyone's credit cards, we will know where you go, how much you spend, why you're spending it, who you're spending it with. That is after they are already here, which is the secondary part of the research of the people who are out of town and why they are thinking of coming here and what it is that they are researching. That's why to me, this, this research is, is really essential, because there's no sense in spending marketing funds or effort on a group of people who, who really aren't going to be coming here. You know, when I got here, I was told there's, there's basically five drive-in markets here. One of them was not even on my list when I started here, but yet Chicago turns out to be number three from the area of people who come here. That was not even considered in any marketing buys. What I find ironic is on the actual, the, the data that we are receiving now with, with the analysis, I would have assumed, big word there, that Branson was probably part of the game of being interested, they are absolutely nowhere on any report or in a, any database of, of ever looking at our websites, being interested, they, they're just nonexistent. And to be real honest, there's been a lot of money spent in Branson. So, I mean, to me, this, this holding off for the next 30 days on actually placing these buys is going to be essential so that we know where we need to be marketing. Obviously, you have Tulsa, you have Dallas, those are two of our biggest markets, Chicago came in three, so.
Where's Lenoa?
Way down, way down, yes. So most of it, obviously, is our drive-in markets. Yeah, the, the, the research capacity with this group is phenomenal, it has been eye-opening.
Cash?
So, yes, you are being creeped.
I use cash.
Well, you know, we're, we're setting up a thing, we have a show next weekend in, in St. Louis, at the Convention Center, we are doing geofencing up there, not for analytical purposes, but so that everybody who walks into that Convention Center, we ding them. We know you're there, we're going to start sending either text messages, ads, whatever we decide, to everyone who physically walks into that building. So it's, I mean, it's, it's advanced, it's been around for a while, but it has never been used here, so it's, it's interesting to go through some of the processes with these, so. It's fun, so if you ever want to come, come watch what it is that we do, please do, because it's really, really interesting, it's fun. No more questions? God, that was painless, thank you.
Thank you, Lacy.
I like the Van Nuys book, by the way.
Yeah.
All right, now we're, we're back into our unfinished business. Get a motion to discuss ordinance for animal change?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Green, I think this is your, one of your-
Yes. I know we had a stickler on Section 1 about animal, are animals at location that is not occupied by human being or beings on a regular basis, has, did you change this a little bit, Tim?
No, I have not changed it.
Okay. I can't remember, I know some people weren't, I think Mr. McClung wasn't happy with the verbiage.
What's wrong with the permanent resident? Should, you know, people go on, people go on vacation, but- Ms. Harmon?
I thought that this was supposed to go back to Tim, that was my understanding from my meeting, that it was going to go back to Tim and he was going to rewrite and make some suggestions as far as having it worded better, but I could be wrong, it was a while ago, but-
It did go back to-
Did you change this a little bit, Tim?
No, I have not changed it.
Okay. I can't remember, I know some people weren't, I think Mr. McClung wasn't happy with the verbiage.
Shouldn't...
What's wrong with permanent residents? Should people go on vacation?
Ms. Harmon?
I thought that this was supposed to go back to Tim. That was my understanding from our meeting, that it was going to go back to Tim, and he was going to rewrite and make some suggestions as far as having it worded better, but I could be wrong, it was a while ago, but...
It did go back to him?
Okay, and it remained the same? So, you looked at it, and you reviewed it again, and it has remained the same?
From the comments that I received, and maybe I didn't receive all the comments, okay? But what I received was that there was a request that things be more specific as to how you define these things. If you try to make them any more specific, you're going to make an ordinance that's unenforceable. Because your police officers cannot stand around and observe 24 hours a day a particular building, to see when someone is or when someone isn't there. A lot of this is going to be, have to be at the discretion of the officer, and at the discretion of a judge, once it comes before them. It's not something that you can hold a stopwatch on.
Okay, so, based on that, on that statement, what you're saying is you did not change anything?
I did not change anything, because I wanted to hear your comments tonight. And if you have proposals that I believe are legitimate, I will change it that way. If you have proposals that you believe are legitimate, and I don't believe are legitimate, I'll tell you why, and I'll still change it if you want it changed. But, to put in specific timeframes creates an impossibility with enforcement.
Ms. McClung?
Let me ask you, Mr. Weaver, if I may. What does the phrase, occupied by human beings, by a human being or human beings on a regular basis, what does that mean? Because not occupied by a human being.
My definition and your definition is probably a little different. Honestly, it would be, the one that counts is the police officer and the judge. My expectation would be that they would find that if you're constantly leaving the pet in a structure, and that you only visit on an occasional basis, once or twice a week, that that would be a violation. If you leave the pet in your house while you go to work every day from 8:00 to 6:00 in the evening, that you're probably not in violation of that ordinance. And I would expect a judge not to find you in violation for simply going to work. If you're basically leaving the animal there as a guard animal, or as some other kind of reason, and you're not visiting the animal on a regular basis, it was my understanding that, when we drafted this ordinance originally, that the concern was that people were leaving their animals in unoccupied buildings, basically, in order to further their own benefit, whether that be because they wanted the animal there as a guard, or just didn't have somewhere else to put them, but that they were only visiting them for a few minutes on a few occasions per week. That's what we're trying to prevent here. You're not, the ordinance is not written to try to prevent somebody from leaving on a regular basis for short periods of time.
It does not differentiate between indoor and outdoor, does that make a difference?
When we drafted the ordinance, there was some consideration of whether it was indoor or outdoor. I know the one incident that sparked a lot of this to begin with, the animals were adjudged to be on a porch, and rather than get into a discussion of whether the animal had to be within the building or outside the building, and whether a porch was inside or outside, I left it when it was open, so a judge could make a decision based on the animal being on the property.
Mr. Thomas?
The problem that we had before, which was animals left for maybe a month in an empty house, how much time would, how many times would the police have to go by there to have adequate documentation that that was not a good situation?
In that type of a situation, the police might not have to be there more than a very few times, but there would have to be someone from the neighborhood who was willing to end up and say that there's no one there.
In court.
Majority of the time when this animal's being left.
That person would have to be willing to go to court?
Unfortunately, that's part of our duty as a United States citizen, is to be willing to go and testify on behalf of our criminal prosecutions. We give our police officers that power to find witnesses and to bring them before the In that instance that we were talking about that sparked some of this concern, I know that there were several neighbors, or at least some neighbors, who probably would have jumped at the chance to be able to come into court, but at that time, we had no restriction that was considered of sufficient quantity or quality to take before a judge.
Ms. Green?
So, Mr. Weaver, do you feel that this gives us some teeth, so that something like this may not ever happen again?
Based on looking around the state at other ordinances that are developed by other towns, I think it gives us our best shot at it. I have seen similar ordinances that are enforced in some jurisdictions, and I've seen similar ordinances that get very little enforcement, but a lot of that comes from who holds the judgeship or judgeships in those particular towns, I think. It does, it leaves it a little spongy, but if you don't leave it spongy, it makes it very impossible to enforce.
Yes, ma'am?
I would like to make a motion that we assign the ordinance a number and read it into record.
I'll second.
Read it for the first reading?
Yes, for the first reading.
Okay. Motion been made to assign this a number and read it for the first reading. We have a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, sing five of saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The ordinance number will be 2290. An ordinance amending Eureka Springs Municipal Code Regarding Animal Care. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs has determined, the City Council amended regulations regarding confining animals, and whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs has determined that the welfare of animals is a citywide concern, and whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs has determined that additional restrictions can help to further safeguard the animal welfare. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, section one, that the Eureka Springs Municipal Code is hereby amended to add the following prohibition. It shall be a violation of city law to either confine an animal or animals at a location that is not occupied by a human being or beings on a regular daily basis. Section two, violation of this ordinance shall result in assessment of court costs and a fine of not less than $50, and not more than $500 for each violation. Multiple animals so confined as to violate this ordinance shall constitute multiple offenses. Section three, the provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared to be separable, and if any provision shall for any reason be held illegal or invalid, such holding shall not affect the validity of the remainder of this ordinance. Section four, all ordinances and resolutions or parts thereof in conflict therewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
All right, let me make another motion. I move that we approve ordinance number 2290 on its first reading.
Second.
Got your motion and a second to improve it on the first reading. Mr. McClung?
Well, I just want to say again that I think that section one is really just still so open-ended that it's, you know, it's based on speculation and judgment, you know, it's just, there's no definition to it. And, so, I don't know that you could ever get a conviction under it, but I guess there's only one way to find out. So, I mean, I don't like it, but it's going to pass.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of ordinance 2290 on first reading, sing five of saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that brings us up to our next, under new business, we've got an application and ordinance for rezoning 187 Huntsville Road. I have an ordinance in your packet for rezoning this.
Do you like a motion to discuss?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion, I mean, we've got the application in your packet from Damon Henke for rezoning this, and also got the ordinance in there. Gone through the planning commission and went through that and approved, sent out before us. Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we assign this ordinance a number and read it for its first reading.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to assign a number and read it on the first reading. Any further discussion? All those in favor, sing five of saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
The ordinance number will be 2291. An ordinance amending zoning certain real property within the corporate city limits of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, commonly known as 187 Huntsville Road. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs has previously adopted planning and zoning regulations for the city, and whereas Logan Redding, the property owner, has petitioned for the property to be rezoned, and whereas the City Planning Commission has performed its duties with regard to the petition. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that section one, certain real property at 187 Huntsville Road in the City of Eureka Springs, Carroll County, Arkansas, and better described on the attached sheet, is hereby rezoned by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, from R2 Contemporary Residential to C2 Contemporary Commercial. Section two, the city planning and zoning map shall be updated to reflect this change at its next printing. Section three, all provisions of the ordinances of the City of Eureka Springs in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are, and the same are hereby repealed, and all other provisions of the ordinances of the City of Eureka Springs not in conflict, but the provisions of this ordinance shall remain in full force and effect. Section four, severability. Should any sentence, paragraph, clause, phrase, or section of this ordinance be adjudged or held to be unconstitutional, illegal, or invalid, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance as a whole, or any part of provision thereof, other than parts so decided to be invalid, illegal, or unconstitutional, and shall not affect the validity of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code as a whole.
Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2291 on its first reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve ordinance 2291 on its first reading. All those in favor, sing five of saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. All right, Mr. McClung?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2291 for its second reading by title only.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Six zero. We're to number 2291, an ordinance amending the zoning of certain real property within the corporate city limits of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, commonly known as 187 Huntsville Road.
Mr. McClung?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2291 on its second reading.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, sing five of saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. That concludes the ordinance 2291 for this session. Our next item of business is the discussion of veto on the ordinance of the permanent entertainment district. Get a motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss, second.
All right, I vetoed this after the vote the last time. The reason for the veto is as I was a tiebreaker, I did cast the affirmative vote for the establishment of a permanent entertainment district going to the city attorney to draft an ordinance. I'm opposed to the committee's recommendation that the district was in operation for seven days a week for nine hours daily. I'm very much in support of establishing a permanent entertainment district with a three-day-a-week, seven-hour-day schedule. I believe that this is a more moderate approach and finds common ground in limiting unnecessary costs to the city while maximizing the prime revenue and opportunities that a permanent entertainment district has to offer. I'm also opposed to the district extending up to Reg's Pizza or to the top of Plainer Hill. There seemed to be a conflict between the recommendations that Councilman Bob Thomas submitted and another boundary that was submitted. It's my belief that this is too large an extension of the district, and I believe the district should begin at the Cat House and Eureka Springs Historical Museum and extend down to Main Street to Main Stage. I am in complete agreement with the boundaries going up through Spring Street to German Alley and down German Alley to Center Street, and then down to Center Street to the intersection of Tibbs Alley down to Main. I also believe and support the concept as included in the voted upon motion of 102419 of both a public meeting on this topic, as well as the inclusion of a sunset clause after a period of approximately three months for the city council to evaluate the effectiveness of the district. Because this is a departure from the committee's recommendation, which the council voted to have the city attorney draft in ordinance form, I found the wisest course of action for me was to be a veto of this vote. Therefore, it's the reason I vetoed the action that was taken. Any comments or questions? Ms. Snyder?
Well, first, just to clarify, veto is not a tie vote. You voted to pass an issue because we were minus a member, you didn't vote to break a tie. Secondly, everybody has been checking with the businesses in town. Now, that's everybody that Harry has talked to, I have talked to, that anybody has talked to. Everybody's checking with businesses. What the hell happened to our residents? They're the ones who live here. They're the ones who count just as much, if not more, than our businesses. Why are they not being talked to? They're the ones who have families and children running around town, they're going to have to put up with people drinking. Nobody has bothered to talk about families. Nobody has talked about our residents, and what is this going to mean to them? I would highly suggest, before you take another step, that a survey be sent, not in one of these little town halls, but a survey be sent to all of our residents in regards to an explanation of what this is, what it means, and how do they feel? Because if you don't, I can guarantee you will end up in court. You are taking their town and making a decision in regards to alcohol that you actually do not have the legal right to do, because you're not experts. Yes, we represent the residents, they expect us to represent them, but you have to talk to them. If you don't talk to them, you don't know what it is that they want. And everybody I have talked to is 100% against turning their town into some drunken alcoholic place just to supposedly bring in tourism, which is asinine. So, I suggest that you put out a survey to all of our residents. We have their addresses, because they have electricity, they have water, most have sewer, we have plenty of ways to contact them. I suggest highly you do that before you go any further. I suggest highly you do that before you go any further.
Ms. Harmon?
I think the biggest thing that this has brought up is the unknown, and, you know, we don't have any facts to know whether or not it will be successful or whether or not it will fail. The only way we can determine whether or not it will or it won't is to actually move forward and do something about it, either to not do anything or to do something. I know that the state has allowed us to have this opportunity. There are other cities that are, you know, other states as well as in Arkansas, that are attempting to determine whether or not it is a positive or a negative for them. I will say I'm in favor of doing it. As far as having a sunset, I think that makes a lot of sense. As far as the discussion about whether or not we will need more police officers out there and/or whether or not we will have hundreds of drunk people in the street, it still has to be determined. There are no facts that state, or we have no facts right now that would allow us to make that determination at this point. So, you know, again, I really think the biggest thing that is, the biggest fear out there is the fear of the unknown. And whether or not it will happen or it won't happen, as far as being positive or negative, we don't know, and we will never know until we make a decision one way or the other. So, you know, I try to hesitate on making a claim that, you know, it will be a complete disaster because we don't know. So, those are just my thoughts on that.
Ms. Mar?
I originally had 100 of these surveys printed up. I spent several days distributing, visiting every shop that I could find. I went back around to shops that I didn't see and dropped them again. I had more surveys printed up, and I did them till it's... I spent a lot of time, a lot of hours, a lot of days going about this. I think it is a personal affront to be accused of rigging this survey. I could have rigged the survey and stayed home. I went around to every place, Mr. Red's Pizza knows, I even handed him a few. Now, this is a survey of the businesses that would be affected by this. This is not a survey of the people that want to have it, it's a survey of everyone that will be affected if this happens. One of the most surprising things about the survey was the response from the ABC permanent holders. They're worried it's gonna cost them their money, they're worried that they're gonna have to hire extra police or extra people, because it's not the local police that's going to come, it's the ABC. If somebody walks out the door with a drink when there's not an entertainment district, they can get busted. If they serve somebody alcohol who's just wandered in from somewhere else and they don't know how many drinks that person's had and they're bar hopping, they could get busted if that person goes out and has a car wreck and causes a problem. I mean, you can, folks, I brought this here, the members of the council can read my survey, you can ignore these results at your peril.
Mr. McClung?
I don't think the state legislature sat around and thought up a way to create more crime for cities and enacted this, the state statute that it gives us this enabling ordinance to, you know, have these entertainment districts. If they thought it was, you know, really gonna, you know, create criminal effect, I don't think that they would have done it. You know, it is an unknown, you know, it makes me nervous too, but at the same time, you know, it's certainly worth investigating and giving it a try if it's reasonable in boundaries and time, and I think the mayor's suggestions on the three days and, you know, the seven hours and whatever that time limit was, and constricting the boundaries is, makes good sense to me. I'm really not sure still how on the containers or the wristbands and all that, how that is going to play out. But, and then, and by the time an ordinance gets enacted, it would, if we did a three-month deal, if it didn't get started until the first of March, then you'd be looking at, you know, March, April, May, or something like that, that might be alright, you know, or April, May, June, maybe, and kind of get you into the first month of summer just as a test case, just to see if it flies, you know, and retain the caveat that if it stinks right off the bat, we can pull it. Certainly do that, too. So, you know, I mean, it's, I don't, I, we may be making it out to me more than what it really might turn out to be, that's, but it's, so I think it's, as long as we safeguard ourselves in that, you know, in the short term, and retain the caveat to pull the plug if we need to, I don't see a problem with that.
Ms. Green?
For me, you know, the people I've talked to, and I've talked to a lot of residents, most of them are fine with it, they kind of want to try it, and they like that there's a sunset clause, but the question I have is, we have on here, is it, was this the discussion of just the veto, or are you proposing your changes tonight? Will we be voting on your changes tonight?
It's just a discussion of the ordinance for the permanent entertainment district. I had to read my veto to make it before the council.
But we have no, you're not presenting an ordinance for a number?
I have not presented any ordinance.
So that gives us basically another month because we're only gonna have one meeting. We could do some kind of survey, maybe in the paper, maybe some way of doing it, and get some feedback, but if we were to pass this, and we have three readings, and during those three readings, a lot of people can come, they can voice, you know, we don't have to pass something on the third reading. If this doesn't happen for me, it's not gonna hurt me as a citizen, it's not gonna hurt me as a business owner, it's not gonna hurt me as a city councilperson. What made me for it was because I saw the young people were the driving force behind it, and they're our future, and I want to give them a chance, I know they've gone and gone to the businesses and worked with the businesses, so that's my reason, is I just, I see these young people, and I want to give them a chance because they are our future.
Anybody else? I'll just wait and see if anybody else, who hadn't spoken yet, Ms. Snyder. Alright, Ms. Snyder?
I meant to mention the numbers for you. Actually, this is an issue that you're either for or against, so these numbers do balance out perfectly and that kind of thing. It's not one of those things where sometimes you'll be for a part of it and against another, you're either for or against, so these numbers are balanced. Secondly, basically, Susan, what you're saying is, we're the people who elected you, because you want to go ahead and do it without their input, that's what you're implying. I never said a word about this being dangerous or hazardous, not today, anyway, in regards to any of that. I said, everybody is overlooking the residents' input. They are not gonna come in waves to a workshop or a town hall, they are not gonna come to our meetings, they're going to do as people the country over do all the time, and sit at home, and whine and moan and complain, because that's the way people are. That's why I'm saying we need to send out a survey to them explaining what this would mean, explaining the additional amount of money the city would be spending, which between, just between cops and cleanup, we're talking $250,000. Oh, yes, I've done my research. We are talking a lot of extra city expenditure. Are we gonna get that much in? Probably not. You have the problem with people, as has been mentioned, going to their cars and refilling. You have the problem with the bracelets, if this thing is as often as it is, do we have to have different bracelets every single week? How does this work? There are a lot of complications, that's why I keep saying, take your time, I'm not saying no, I'm saying talk to the people, think about it, figure it out. When the state came up with this, they sure as heck were not sitting there and picturing Eureka when they passed this law. Nobody does. We are such a uniquely shaped and built city, nobody ever considers how this would affect Eureka. One street, you can't close it off. One street, if you don't close it off, you have drunks getting hit. The whole nine yards, we are very special, this has to be considered. But the number one consideration, talk to the residents, and do not try to pass it without doing that.
Ms. Harmon?
Okay, so, as far as Ms. Snyder's comments, number one, I did not mention any names. I said, this is an unknown, and I really think that it is very unprofessional as a city council member to do what you just did.
I don't think it's unprofessional for you to do yours.
Number two, I think it's also very reckless, very reckless, for someone to sit at this table and claim to know the facts. You don't know the facts. This is Eureka Springs, it has never been done here, regardless of whether or not it's been done in 50 other states, it has never been done in Eureka Springs, and I think it is very reckless for a city council member, for Mickey Schneider, to go ahead and claim to know the facts. So, again, it is an unknown for Eureka Springs, whether you like it or you don't like it, it is still an unknown, and whether or not we get additional feedback or we make a determination as a city council, that is still to be seen. We haven't, we don't even have an ordinance in front of us. So, you know, to pit one person against the other, I think is, it's just not the right thing to do, and I think the city council should be able to discuss this without, you know, being negative one way or the other. So, again, I don't appreciate what you just did, Mickey, so...
Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we draft an ordinance regarding the quasi-permanent entertainment district, or I guess it would be a temporary entertainment district.
That'd be permanent with the sunset clause?
Well, I guess that, yeah, that's fine, however you want to word that.
Because it's not a temporary, there's a different set of rules for temporary.
Okay, okay, alright, for a permanent with a sunset clause of June 30th, based on the parameters as provided in your letter of veto.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second to go ahead and draft an ordinance for a permanent entertainment district as outlined in my deal with the sunset clause of June 30th, you got a second? Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank all the members of the Entertainment District Committee who worked for 10, 12 hours on this for no pay. I'd really, at this point, I'm not sure what, you're doing exactly what the council did last month, which was to have an ordinance drafted that we could then discuss, and you could have brought in all these changes as amendments to the recommendation of the Entertainment District Committee. So instead of just slapping them in the face and saying, you don't want anything to do with their recommendations, you're writing a whole new thing. Why didn't you just bring in, why didn't we just bring in this ordinance that we had requested, and then you could have recommended your amendments to the ordinance? I don't understand why you chose to do it this way. It's a bad, bad precedent, it wasn't necessary. And what I, when I heard that you had vetoed it, I contacted two or three people that had asked me about it and said, it's dead, it's a dead issue. I thought you were killing the issue, I didn't know you just wanted minor changes made. These are minor changes, these are all the, these are the changes we've discussed every meeting for eight weeks, and we knew that there would be changes made to our recommendations. So, we're doing tonight exactly what we did a month ago.
Ms. Mar?
The map, the map of the entertainment district, I think that it really needs to be brought out, there's chunks of it that... You're gonna run out of a drink before you get to the next bar to find another, get another drink, okay? And you might roll down German Alley without a lane. Yes, we don't know, but... If we're talking about, if we're a place where there was a restaurant and a bar, a restaurant and a bar in a contained area, you know, Mountain Home Square is a place, it's a square place, they keep an eye on it, but the way it's strung out here in Eureka Springs and the fact that there's, there are some people that are in the district that aren't gonna participate in serving alcohol, people in the street, which, like I said, means that there's gonna be a lot of steps from the, to the next spot. If we have, if we have one bad weekend, and it could happen, it could run off a lot of people, I think if we want to have, bring more people in town, I think the CAPC's, CAPC's new plan is probably the best thing to follow and to follow up on because this is, this just isn't... It's not backed up with facts, and you can't say that, oh, why don't we try it? Well, you know, I can't swim across the ocean with a boat, you know?
Ms. Snyder?
Okay, I never said I had the facts, I said I had done my research on what this will cost the city, and yes, everything that would have to be done, that's what we're talking. I would like to know why some of you at the council table are in such a damn rush to get this written up and passed or voted on, as opposed to talking to the residents. Do our people who live here not count? Because that sure as hell is what you're implying, talk to the people, geez.
Ms. Green?
If we were to entertain this, we're not gonna get an ordinance for almost another month, then it's three readings after that, so that's, so we've got probably two and a half months before, and to me, that's plenty of time to get feedback, and I keep waiting, this has been going on for two months, and I don't, I get a little bit of feedback here and a little bit of feedback over there, you get some feedback from your friends, I get some feedback from my friends. You know, I've never known Euricans not to come down when they don't want something and verbally speak their minds, I mean...
Ms. Mar?
I just did a survey of over 100 businesses. I spent days, days, walking around, visiting these places multiple times, of 48 returns was not easy to get, they were self-addressed, I put stamps on a lot of them. Don't tell me I just talked to my friends, please read...
I was talking about, I didn't just talk to my friends either, I too go all over town.
Alright, any further discussion? We've got a motion and a second to go ahead and draft an ordinance with, as outlined, with sunset clause, with June 30th as the deadline for a permanent district. All those in favor, sing five percent... All those in favor, sing five of a sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. Talk to the people.
Who were the noes?
Me.
Mr. Meyer and Mr. Snyder.
Ms. Meyer?
Yes.
Yeah, I caught that.
All right, and that brings us up to our next item of business.
Let's see that, but that's funny.
We got to get a motion to discuss, discussion of feral cats in the city.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right, Ms. Harmon?
All right, so quite a few people that I have talked to have complained about feral cats in the city. So, I wanted to bring it up for discussion as far as the issues that the individuals are having. Number one, there, at least in our area or my neighborhood, there are a lot of feral cats. They do not have collars on them, and I know some people will say, "Well, I don't put a collar on my pet." But there are a lot of them around town. And I can tell you, based on, on our property itself, I, at any given day, I can probably walk around with at least, and see at least 10, 15 cats. So there are a lot of them there. My, my complaint is not about cats. It's about individuals who abandon these cats. I think it's cruel. I think it's, it's, you know, it's just irresponsible for, for people to have pets. You know, I constantly hear about, you know, "They're my fur babies." You know, "I love pets. I'm compassionate to pets." But yet, at the same time, we have so many people that, that leave these, these cats behind. We've had it happen in our neighborhood, and they continue to breed and have litters of kittens. And again, I just think it is cruel that, you know, people move out and these cats are left behind. And I guess the assumption is with some people that, you know, they feel like somebody else is going to take care of them. But it's not someone else's responsibility to take care of your cat that you've left behind. It just isn't. So, I'd like to see something done. I've read quite a bit of information as far as whether or not, you know, spay or neuter ordinances or laws work in towns or cities. But I do think that if you have a pet, you have to have some responsibility. So, that's why I put it on the agenda.
Ms. Green?
I too have read a lot about the feral cats and stray cats and spay and neuter. And what Susan says is true. There are some areas in our town that there are a lot of abandoned cats that have become feral. And I love animals. I'm, I'm on the board of the Humane Society, and, and it's, it's terrible, the cruelty of these animals. And it's also terrible because they kill the birds, they, they kill the lizards, they kill everything because they, they need to eat. We do have laws on our books about abandoning animals, and we, we really need somehow or another to figure out how to enforce it harder. I think we need to entertain looking at stronger spay and neuter laws. The states that we work with at the Humane Society, we're transporting animals now that, there's so many in Carroll County that are homeless. We're transporting them to states that have very strong spay and neuter laws. And, and those laws, they don't have any pets. They're, they're begging us for pets because their humane societies are empty. And so, we've been on the cutting edge of a lot of things. 2-2-3, remember the domestic partnership? You know, I think we can set an example if we think about some stronger laws for spay and neutering and enforce our laws that we have on the books about abandoning.
Ms. McClan?
I've heard of this fellow, he's called, his name is Pied Piper. You might get a hold of him. He might get rid of them, or maybe the cat owners, if we could implant a cyanide capsule in them or something like that, and if they turn loose or they're cats, maybe we could just, you know, we can, well, cats, rats, you know, it's all the same in this particular instance, that's a...
I thought the Pied Piper was just a cat house.
Well, he, oh, yeah, it is, you're right.
And the cats are down there, Terry.
Well, the thing is, it's, you know, it's, you can do anything to the laws that you want, but you're not going to catch anybody.
No.
You're not, you're not going to do anything to anybody. And so, you know, it's, you need, you need to talk to the state or the county or somebody as, and, and, and make it where it's a health problem. And if it's a health problem, then you can maybe get some, get some kind of action taken to help eliminate the cats. That would be the only thing that I would know what to do. I'd just, you know, it's a, I mean, I have my own ideas, but I'll not talk about them here.
And Ms. Snyder?
For years, our Humane Society did catch fixed release with cats. Has that ended?
What we do is we have a spay and neuter clinic and it's...
Yeah, no, this was for feral cats.
I think that, yeah, Dr. Mueller would still do that if they're brought in.
Well, yeah, see, and, and maybe that's...
They clip their ears and, 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 no, just so that you know.
Oh.
They put a little clip in their, their ears.
Anyway, but this used to be done a lot. And all it was, was the local residents would see that they had at least feral cats, they would get a little kitty house thingy, trap them, take them in, catch fixed release. At least then they were not procreated. And we had a very good control of the feral cats. But I haven't seen or heard anything about it in a long time. Maybe that's something that council should look into, headlining again, or, you know, pushing for, or whatever, helping humane society start doing it again. It was very effective.
Mr. Meyer?
Animal control, doesn't animal control get involved with this?
Not with ferals.
Not with cats.
No.
Not ferals.
Ms. Green?
What Mickey brought up is, yes, that, that's a great idea, and I'm fully in support of it. There's a difference between feral and stray. I have like four stray cats that we feed that were dumped. Fortunately, mine, I think, are all neutered, and they kind of come and go. The town's full of it. There's, where Susan is, there is a lot of them. And then there's an area down on Pine Street. I know there's an area up on East Mountain. There's just a, a lot of them. And, you know, if the Humane Society would do it, it'd be great. The other thing that I wanted to bring up that isn't cats, but it's dogs, we have an ordinance here that you must license your dogs. And we need to strengthen that too, because that sends a message that, you know, if you're going to have a pet, you have to be responsible for it. And to get a license, they have to have a rabies shot.
Ms. Harmon?
I was just going to go back to what Terry was saying about, you know, if it's a, if it's a health problem. The majority of, how long does a rabies shot last? There's, what, the yearly's in the three years, maybe? I think. So, I would say probably the majority of those feral cats are not vaccinated against rabies. It is the responsibility, just like Melissa said, with the dogs, it is the responsibility of the town to make sure that its residents are safe and are protected from something like a, an animal that is running and would possibly contract rabies from, you know, another animal, that they aren't bitten. It is a pretty big process to have rabies shots done. I've had it done, and I've had a child that has had it done. So, it only lasts for about seven years. But obviously, if you don't do it and you've been bitten by an animal that has rabies, the outcome isn't real good if you don't go and get those shots. So, you know, as far as a city goes, it is the responsibility of the city to make sure that its residents are safe. Now, have we had any instances of rabies in town? I don't know. I do know that it is on the books that, you know, a pet owner is responsible for making sure those shots are done. So, if I were to say, you know, is there a health risk out there? I would say, yes, there is. Because these animals are not being vaccinated against rabies, and they are within the city limits. So, as a city, to, you know, ignore it, not ignore it, whatever, I think, you know, I've checked with the office downtown and, and, you know, they order, they order tags every year. And I think we're probably looking at less than, I'm going to be really, really kind here, and I'm going to say, less than 50 a year, people actually get their animals tagged. Now, you can talk to everybody in town, and they'll tell you that, you know, we have more dogs than we have residences. We probably have more, we probably have twice as many cats as we have residences here in town. So, there is an issue for the city in that discussion. As far as cats go, I do know that animal control will bring you a trap so you can live trap them. What you do with them after that is entirely up to you. Even that, I think, is cruel because it's not the cat's fault. It was the owner's fault because they, they've either dumped it, weren't mature enough, weren't responsible enough, whatever, to go ahead and leave this animal. So, I still think that, that we should, we should do something. Because there really are two issues. It's the safety of the residents from something like rabies, and it is the responsibility of, of those pet owners to take care of those pets, so.
Anybody have a solution for where we need to go here?
I think we could, should put it back on the agenda for discussion, and maybe Ms. Harmon and I can look up health laws on animals and stuff, and maybe come up with something that maybe will be a solution if it's a health risk. You know, we can make stronger, stronger laws or, you know...
Have the head of Humane Society come and talk to you?
Well, I think I'll have our manager, because she's got some great ideas.
And we can work together.
All right, well, well, let's drop until we get to the agenda setting.
Okay.
All right. All right, this brings us to our next item, which is a third quarter financial report with Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Two of the elements were in the monthly report, the bank balances and the long-term liabilities. Actually, I didn't see, were the bank balances in there? I know the long-term liabilities are all... I think they were. Sorry? Thanks. And so, the other three elements are the receipts that came in, the check register through the end of the third quarter, and the payroll through the end of the third quarter. So, that is here if anybody wants to review it, and that's it.
Thank you, Ann.
You're welcome.
All right, our next item, and get a motion to discuss, is our lottery drawing for the 2020 food truck.
So moved.
Second.
And I got a motion by Mr. McClan and a second with Ms. Harmon for lottery drawing.
This was a pretty interesting...
I think that's your...
The, the exact number of spaces available were the exact number of applicants.
Well...
So, for Group A, Main Street, I, that's, I haven't known that to happen before. There was one, only one applicant, which is what's allowed, and that's the bus that is in the parking lot near Colossal Cupcakes?
Barbecue bus.
Ooh.
Or whatever it was, yeah.
Something close to that. In Group B, on, which is Center Street, one property permit for one food truck, there was one applicant. Travis Holloway, his parking lot where Victor has been set up. The third group, Kings Highway, for the first time this year, we had one applicant for the sector from intersection Highway 62 to Eugenia, which is a tiny little fraction of property. The new owner of the log cabin inn is the applicant for the parking lot behind the log cabin inn, and he's hoping to tag team with one of the members from Group D, which is the long stretch of highway from the west end of town to the east end of town and Highway 23, where two food truck locations are permitted by this ordinance. One of those applicants is the community center right across the road from the log cabin, and the second in that group...
Is that Bob, the community center, actually, what is the applicant?
It, the community center is the applicant.
Okay.
And it's always the property owner.
Right.
So, the other one on that stretch of highway, making the second candidate, is where the current brand, the current name of it is Hobbies and Homesteads. So, every applicant won.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, do we need to do anything, or that just notify them to...
No, I'll just give them all a call and say, "It's happening. You need to be operating by May 1st." Yes.
All right, and that's, that, good for that. All right, item number six, get a motion to discuss the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-nine in City Hall. This is, we end up, as I think most of y'all know, renting space from the county and the county judge. We're leasing the, the City Hall spaces down below, and this just gives me the opportunity to meet with the county judge and hopefully establish that we'll be paying the same rent that we've been paying for a while. So, this gives me the authorization to negotiate and execute a lease agreement with the judge.
Make a motion, assign this resolution article. Number?
Second.
And read for passage?
I'll read for passage.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Good discussion. Mr. Thomas?
Oh, no, I had my hand up to make a motion, but I was waiting to be recognized.
I'm sorry. I heard, I was looking at this, and I was listening.
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Snyder?
Has anyone over the years, because this came up many years ago when we were all on council, has anyone ever figured out yet how we ended up having to pay when the initial agreement with council was that we got this free? Really?
No one could find the written agreement.
So that's when they started charging us rent, which, even though the deed said free forever? Okay, thank you.
All right, you got a motion and, and a second.
I do. Mr. McClan?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
The resolution number will be 766. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to negotiate and execute a lease agreement by and between the county judge of Carroll County, Arkansas, as lessor, and the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, as lessy. Leasy, lessy. Be it resolved by the city council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. The mayor of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, is hereby authorized to negotiate and execute a lease agreement by and between the county judge of Carroll County, Arkansas, as the lessor, and the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, as the lessy, whereby all, excuse me, whereby said city agrees to lease 2,062 square feet of floor space for office purposes on the lowest level of the Western District Carroll County Courthouse located in 44 South Main in the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, on a mutual term of up to three years, commencing on January 1, 2020, and subject to renewal annually no later than January 15 of that year and thereafter as the parties may agree.
Thank you. All right, our next item is a resolution for the 2020 parking lease.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right. Again, this is a resolution for me to negotiate with the county judge the lease for the parking lot that surrounds the courthouse between the auditorium and the transit facility. So, if I can get a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Thomas, make a motion to read, sign this and... I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Thomas, make a motion to read, assign this a number and read it.
You know, that's, that's nice, but I'd like to, instead of people just making motions out of the blue, you need to get the floor first. So go ahead, Mr., you had the floor, go ahead and make your motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we assign this resolution to number and read it for passage.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. Hearing done.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
The resolution number will be 767. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to negotiate and execute parking lot lease agreement for the Carroll County Western District Courthouse parking lots by and between the county of Carroll County, Arkansas, as the lessor, and the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, as the lessi. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. The mayor of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, is hereby authorized to negotiate and execute a lease agreement for the Carroll County Western District Courthouse parking lot by and between the county of Carroll County, Arkansas, as the lessor, and the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, as lessi, whereby said city agrees to lease the following described property. Existing parking lots immediately surrounding and adjacent to the Carroll County Western District Courthouse located at 44 South Main Street, Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Such parking lot presently occupying the property directly northeast and south of said courthouse, and bounded by distinct barriers such as the auditorium, First Street, and Curves respectively, for a term of one year, commencing on January 1, 2020, and ending at midnight on December 31, 2020.
All right. Okay, that concludes our, our business. We got an agenda setting, I think, Ms. Green, you wanted to set?
A discussion of solutions for feral cats in the city.
Okay, feral cat solution. Second?
Oh, second.
Anything else? Mr. Thomas?
Council needs to discuss if it's going to need an additional, or any additional budget workshops, in which case the council needs to set the dates for those.
Do we need a second for that? I don't, I'm not clear on what you're asking.
Well, do we need, we need to decide if we need to have more budget workshops for 2020 budget. And if we do decide that we need more, we need to set the dates for those, because the way the date was set today did not work out.
Okay, I was, okay, so it's, it was how today's was done?
Pardon?
It was how today's was done.
Right.
Not that we don't have enough, but how today's was done.
Well, I don't know if we need another one.
So you want to put that on the agenda?
Yes, please.
Okay, and I'll second that.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, anything else?
I'm not sure I understand. Are we, are we, did we not set a?
No, we're going to, we're going to set that at our next meeting.
Oh, okay, I guess it doesn't matter. Yeah, that's all right.
Okay. All right. Anything else? All right, council comments. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, I have two. The first one being with regards to the budget workshop that took place today at 4:00. When the original mention of that from the mayor's office came out, it came out in an email that said, "I want to know if you're available on this date." And I did, I said, "It's not a good date for me. It's not a good time, I don't like it." I thought that we would set up something where all members could be present. I did not realize we were voting, and if five people said they wanted it today, you'd go ahead and have it. So that's why I want, I want council to set it now, at the next meeting, so that we can agree on a date and we can all be present. The other thing I'd like to say is I've already complimented the entertainment district committee, but I'd also like to compliment, believe it or not, this entire city council. I think, I think you're all intelligent people, and I think you all have very different perspectives, and you present them, and that's important. And again, the mayor's veto, if you, if we pass an ordinance and the mayor feels it's inappropriate, I can see where he would veto it. But to veto discussion of a topic, and that was all we were doing. You know, we had, and it's in the notes, I think, that we, we wanted an ordinance drafted so that we could discuss it, so that we could consider having another town hall meeting. There could have been amendments made to it. As I said, we're doing the same thing in December that we did last week, and I think it just, again, just to talk to city, to look at city council and say, "I don't want you guys to discuss this issue," I think is a bad precedent.
Ms. Green?
First, I want to say to Mickey, I'm sorry for your loss. I hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving, and I agree with Bob. It is an honor to serve with all of you people and your different perspectives, and basically, I think we seem to get along. We don't always agree, but we seem to at least respect each other, and I think that's important.
Ms. Snyder?
Just condolences to my husband and his family for the loss of his father today.
Ms. Harmon?
Nothing.
Mr. Meyer? Mr. McClung?
Yeah, beautiful day today in the Ozarks, it really was, and, you know, any day we can get like today is, is a true blessing at this time. And also, I want to wish everyone a happy and blessed Thanksgiving, and, and with friends and family, that, you know, you all get to spend that time and, and make the best of it, and I hope, I know that this won't happen, but I hope that no one has to spend it alone. So.
Mr. Mayor, I forgot one personal comment. Is that okay? November is National Adoption Month. I don't know how many people know that, but I'd just like to thank the two young men that adopted me 40 years ago, and tell them that I'm very glad that they did it. Thank you.
All right. First of all, I want to extend my condolences, Ms. Snyder, to your, your loss and your family's loss. It's never easy going through this when we lose a family member, loved one. And also, I want to echo what Mr. McClung was talking about on Thanksgiving. I hope everybody out there has a great Thanksgiving, and remember, it's, it's called Thanksgiving, it's time to be grateful. And I think we have a lot to be grateful for. I'm grateful for our city council members and the community that we live in. And along with that same lines, I'm also very proud to announce that we, city of Eureka Springs, have three different awards that we won, that will be presented to Eureka Springs at the Municipal League's Winter Conference. First, Eureka Springs will be named the Volunteer Community of the Year. This award recognizes the outstanding volunteerism, community service work in response to community needs done by Echo Village and the mayor's task force on economic development. This award is co-sponsored by the Office of the Governor, the Governor's Advisory Commission on National Service and Volunteerism, and the Arkansas Municipal League. The other two awards are for the 2019 Trend Center City of the Year. Eureka Springs won in two categories. We won an environmental green management for Eureka Springs Native Plant Garden Project, and for the Tourism Development Creative Culture for Eureka Springs Arts Council Street Art Program. The Trend City City Award was created to recognize cities throughout the state of Arkansas that have gone above and beyond to improve the lifestyles, infrastructure, wellness, and more within the community. So I think the cities should be very proud of receiving these awards, and all the volunteers and the citizens who've put their efforts together to win these. Upcoming events. This courthouse and city offices will be closed on Thanksgiving and the day after. And then on the 28th, we will have the Don Gammy Turkey Trot out at Lake Leatherwood City Park, starting at 7:30 in the morning. And on the 29th and 30th, that weekend, we'll have Meet the Makers from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. down at Main Stage Creative Center. It's a great time to go down and pick up some artwork and some, and some art from people who are making it down there. And on the 30th, that Saturday, we'll have the Shop Small Saturday from noon to 3:00 p.m. in downtown Eureka Springs. And that will be followed by the tree lighting ceremony in the Basin Park at 4:00 p.m. And then on December the 5th, it's one of my favorite things, and I think it's one of the city's highlight, is a 53rd Silver Tea, being from 1:30 to 3:30 at the Crescent Hotel. If you've never been, this is quite an event, and it's a lot of fun, and it's a great fundraiser. On the next day, the 12th, we'll have the Christmas Parade of Lights, starting at 6:00 p.m. from the library going on down to Spring Street.
Which date?
The 6th.
What did I say, the 6th?
You said the 12th.
Oh, I'm sorry, December the 6th, okay. And then on the 7th, December the 7th, will be Santa and the Fire Department in the park from noon to 2:00 p.m. in Basin Park. Also on the 7th, will be the Christmas Tour of Homes from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., which is Eureka Springs Preservation Society benefit. And that evening, we'll have the 17th John T. Hart's Christmas Concert at 7:00 p.m. at the auditorium. And that's all I have, and y'all have a very good Thanksgiving.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you all.